This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Calling in to order, Linda Markey.
Here.
Laura Stott.
Present.
Megan Harvey here. Hi. First on our agenda is public comments. I will open for.
Give me your fifteen dollar bags if I have any.
Can Walter have any?
Yes, absolutely.
Also, she had to say it's public.
These have peanuts.
Do you have any public comments, Walter, about the budget?
I don't even know.
You don't even know about this?
Ooh, I think that slaps better for.
Oh.
Nice choice.
Okay.
You want some chocolate to go with it?
To our next item.
Plane.
Chair's not perfect then.
My man, I'm helping with you.
Well, don't let that child.
We brought him. Okay. Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, so next was on our, what we can really do is any order we want to. So we had the poll overview last time. We can get into the nitty gritty of the district budget or special education. We can go through questions on the two building budgets. Do you have a preference of what we do first?
No.
Does anyone have a preference? Someone says, good. Anyone have a preference of what we do first?
No.
No.
Well, Julia, I defer to you.
I know what they all say.
That makes really good sense. Well, then, maybe we could start with the two building budgets.
Okay.
That we looked over, but we didn't actually talk about.
Right, I emailed you stuff, I don't know if you got it.
Well, I didn't have access to my email. Oh, my phone was.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I emailed the two too today. I'll see you out at some point.
So.
Um.
This is this chair. This is all of them.
There's hot flashes, Maureen.
Great, thank you. And did you want a copy of the two new ones? Or did you print?
I printed the two new ones, thank you though.
My own recorder.
I can, let me look at mine, because I can pull them up. So there's the high school in Mountain View. You can borrow mine, because I can scroll them up on my screen.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start then with the two building ones. We'll do MVS building. Do you have anything that you wanted to point or direct our attention to? Specifically?
Second. So, in MVS, I'm looking at notes that Nick had put in here and then things that came from conversations. So, um, just know that the school choice, right? We're using a half a million dollars as an offset to professional salaries. So in that other funding column, if you're wondering what that half a million dollars is, then school choice. And then the row right below it, there's three staff members that are on Title I. Right, so that's the P to five. And so there's big offsets to the teacher salaries. And those two. So, the only addition, like changes that are here staffing wise for Mountain View is the fourth grade position that's becoming a spend position. Because they're reducing a class there. And then, um, the inclusion of the .5 FTE early childhood coordinator and then the SSP teacher, right? So there's like a reduction in the regular ed teacher line and an increase in the spend teacher line.
Julia, the first point that you made about where this whole choice is, I don't see it.
Right here.
Which?
The other, the.
That one? See the mostly empty column?
It says other funding column, like ten rows down, there's a $500,000 and a $248,000.
It's a empty.
Uh, interventionist, here. I see, thank you. Yep. Oh, that, I see. You want to know why? Because I don't know the difference between a column and a row. That's, there it is.
Okay. You know how I know? Do you want to know my trick? You roll a bow. But, I'm not getting, that's how I remember it.
That doesn't help me at all. Thank you so much, though.
I'm here for you. Not in a useful way, though. Um, okay.
Right, and there are two pre-K staff that are paid for by tuition revolving. And couple staff, the tuition receipts that we collect for the peers that are in the pre-K program. So that's the offset that you see from your part for my notes. Um, there's pre-K. So for Mountain View, those are the only non-general fund items that were in here. And really, it was just those couple of staffing changes. Other than that, there aren't really any big changes to the Mountain View budget. Um, yeah. Right, so it's really just any requests that they have made for supplies and materials and those couple of staffing changes.
Right. Good, so the classroom teacher, and we can't like, the line says teachers' classroom, MVS, middle, professional salaries.
Yep.
That's the one that went up, and then there's the, is that the one where we added in the spend?
No, so the spend one was three rows down from that, where it says LO1 general fund teacher classroom spend. Yep.
Okay, so the, that one is up forty-six point seven-two percent. Is that just the increase in contractual?
Uh, so it's forty, it's up that much because last year's offset was $750,000?
Got it.
Right, and so there's an automatic $250,000 that's in there that wasn't last year.
Got it, okay.
It's because of the change in this, the offset from school choice.
Yep. Thank you. Sorry, you just said that and then I.
I may not have articulated.
Because it's not a change in the requested funding, it's a change in the appropriation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, because of the decrease in offset, because we've had to use school choice funding to fill budget gaps. Yep.
And then the seventy-eight percent increase on textbooks, that's the switching to the color math books.
Yes. Yeah, that line and the line below it are both textbook related. For both math and ELA, there's some purchases that are happening. Um, so one round of the math ELA book, they're actually purchasing some of the math books this year with some funds that they had in their budget, because they want to do some PD in the spring and do some introduction to it and then do great teachers this summer to work on it. Um, some of it is coming out of Julianne's budget, right? For the first round, so the sixth, seventh, and eighth are buying materials with some funds that they have this year to get the teacher supplies in ahead of time. Some of the consumables then will be ordered with next year's budget.
Right.
And then the elementary materials are going to be ordered from Julianne's budget for this year. And then if they choose to keep using that, they'll have to work that cost for the consumables into next year's budget, into FY27.
Makes sense.
Yep. And so because they were able to purchase some of it this year, it frees them up to purchase some other ELA materials.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Um, I know it's only been like three days. Did we look at class size stuff?
We decided not to do it.
Just not even, okay, cool. We're just, we're not going to address that right now. We'll address it another time.
Well, did you get the memo that I sent to the mayor?
I did. So that is.
That apparently has.
I'm going to frame it.
The ledge is much farther away now. Right, I mean, I could say it isn't there, but we're not standing on it anymore.
That was a beautiful, I forwarded that to you as well.
Wow, 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 okay, sure.
Yeah, you can, you can have some fun weekend reading too, is what it is, but it was beautifully crafted. Yeah, it's like this.
It was exactly what the mayor was looking for, so.
Exactly. Exactly the letter. You, Michelle, so I don't have to do that.
Okay, um, the other question I had, and I don't know where exactly to ask this question.
Anywhere you want.
But I was, yeah, we'll just do it wherever, and you can direct me. Um, so I was talking with somebody, and I have no background or independent knowledge of this, but someone was saying, we have a lot of like software packages and applications, or like programs that we use. Is that anything, like have we looked at how many programs?
Yeah, we've already cut all those down.
Okay, great.
Yep. Yep, we already did that, actually we started doing that last year.
You did, okay. So is there a reduction in them?
We talked about it last year. By then, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it happened last year and a lot of it was running out, um, right, subscriptions. And there's a lot of things that aren't being renewed this year. And so some of that is going towards, um, right, refresh cycles of those things. So, um, I just was talking to Justin about some of that today, and I just gave him a current year budget report, because he's, you know, trying to plan for, with what he's got left for this year. What are projects that he can do, maybe over a couple vacation or things like that? And then planning ahead. Yep. And some of those things are in his line, and some of them are in Julie's, some of them are in the buildings. But Julie does have a spreadsheet that has sort of all the softwares and what's being used.
Yeah, great, yep. Bubbling. Uh, that's the only question I have about MVS. Not budget wise. Good. Okay, then let's talk about the high school budgets.
Um, thanks for that. Um, other funding, um, it's really just the two bright staff that you see on there. And now this year, it's half of their salary, which is why you see fairly big increases in those two, because half of their salary is now in the general fund and half their salary is in the, is being funded through other sources.
Can we make a note to ask Bill to give us a year-end report on bright at like the end of June? Thank you.
Notes that are in here. Um, right, the big increase that you see, there's a technology line, that's 147 percent. That's to replace the desktop computers, that computer lab. That's what that big increase is.
That's necessary.
Yep. It gets to a point that they're not functioning anymore.
Yeah. Okay, it looks like some of these are just salary, and some of these have like a big percentage, but when you look at like, you've gone from five thousand to ten thousand.
And remember again, it's not always the percentage of the increase, it's the percentage of the increase from prior appropriation. Yep, yep.
I get tricked by that sometimes when I go over.
Right, like you see something that looks like it went.
Forty-nine percent increase. I'm okay with that five thousand.
Yeah. It's tricky.
Yeah.
In West Springfield, there was a guy who was like, why, why is this like three hundred percent increase? And it's because, because the line went from seven hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. So it looks like it went up three hundred percent, because we need to buy new batteries for walkie-talkies. Right, but sometimes.
Right.
Yeah. Percentages are misleading. Yes.
Oh, and that looks, I don't have any questions about that at all. It looks like, I mean, we've already talked about the fact that we're like maintaining all of our stuff, so.
I do, meaning, I want to know, I think it's fair for the public to know that it is largely level service, with a couple of those holes in the dam finally getting plugged. Oh. Yep. Like a couple of things to just get things a little, like there's some bumpiness, this post-COVID thing, isn't it like, we're still.
We're slowly rebuilding, would you say?
Trying, we're trying.
Right, right, the, like the one personnel change is that life skills teacher.
Right.
Right, because we're reallocating parents, they're, you know.
This is the five-year plan.
Yeah.
Which is good, that's how we have to do it responsibly, so it sticks. Okay. Awesome. We're going to do district special ed first. So, did you have anything you wanted to? Well, I don't know, what do you want to start with? District is on the top?
April first.
April first? That's true, it is.
And I just put them in the order they were on the agenda.
Perfect, okay.
Um, on the district side, in terms of other funding sources, right? Most of it is in the operating budget. Um, there's a small offset for some tuition revolving account that goes to like the project coordinator salary. Um, so that's for the work related to EC and registration and all of that stuff that goes on here. So that's that eighty-one hundred dollars. The other big offset is obviously using circuit breaker for tuition and transportation. Um, those are the big numbers that you see towards the bottom.
Julie, what time, what time this month are you going to get a little more information on that circuit breaker? The emergency?
So the application is due, I believe, March twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And I don't know how long, because it's a brand-new claiming system. So we don't, supposedly the new claiming system is going to make it so that they can evaluate the process much thicker.
Okay.
Um, yeah, without me having.
That's what they said about the new BACSA.
Yeah.
Are you going to have the emergency relief?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So, I would love to tell you I've got a pretty good sense of what our claims have looked like in prior years. I can't tell you that at the moment.
And even Nick, before he left, was just very uncertain about how it would all shake out.
Right.
Not even want to rely on that, though.
Yes, we've had some unanticipated placements, but in order to qualify for extraordinary relief, your costs have to increase by twenty-five percent. Whether or not we'll met that twenty-five percent threshold, I'm not sure, right? I haven't even done like quick back-of-the-nap calculations, mostly because, um, the window to start working on that just opened this week and, right?
You have some stuff to do.
Yeah, we've had some stuff going on.
Yeah, okay. I feel like I just don't even want to use it, it's.
And we, I wasn't worried about that, I just wanted to know the timeline, so it's due March twenty-eighth. We used to hear what, June?
Yep. I mean, the idea is for them to get it to you in time to close out, right? Any sort of, I say, overspending in your book or in your budget. But it means that you then don't get that money the next year. Because you file your, generally speaking, you file your claim in July for expenses that ended in June, and then you get four quarterly payments in the next year. Right, so you get a payment usually October, November-ish, and then January, March, and then June. Um, again, they're hoping that this new system, because a lot of times what they're ticking and tying and cross-referencing is like, I had the same kid on my claim that somebody who were cost sure is, and they're tying that out. So now all the like matching on student SASED numbers is happening before you submit the claim.
Okay.
Um, so that should speed up the reconciliation process.
So if we don't get, if we don't qualify for emergency status, it doesn't affect the bottom line so much, it affects when we have cash.
Yes. Yep. It affects whether we get a payment from Desi in June or whether that amount is included in the full quarterly payments we get the following fiscal year.
And we haven't heard anything new from the state about the idea of maybe increasing those circuit breaker reimbursements and?
Um, so there is a separate line item in Healy's budget using the fair share tax.
I was wondering about that, okay.
To fund the transportation reimbursement piece.
Right.
Because the way the legislation is, is that they have to fund the tuition piece first.
Right.
Which is why that almost, that almost always gets funded at the seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
And then whatever's left over funds transportation, which is why transportation has been like twenty-two or forty-four, fifty-one. Because it's whatever's left over, because under, under the law, they have to fund the tuition piece first. Right, and then the transportation comes. But Healy has earmarked using leftover fair share revenue from last year to fund, to fully fund the transportation piece.
That's a lot for us, right? Does that include VanPul, is that?
If, for out-of-district transportation. Well, again, I have to talk to Malini about like which stu, which of our industry students we've claimed in the past. Right, because you have to meet a threshold. So like in Springfield, our general rule of thumb is, we didn't even bother claiming a kid if they didn't have a one-on-one and didn't do extended year. Because they weren't going to meet the threshold if they didn't have those, that level of service. Right, um, but with VanPul's costs going up and up, and they then include transportation, because transportation, we've only been allowed to claim since, what, 2019? Yeah, it's a fairly new piece to the puzzle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so there's something to watch, all right.
Yep.
Fascinating.
Like it when you ask me questions, I know. It's good.
I don't have other questions on the high school side, do you, Megan?
High school, I think I'm to gesture.
No, I don't think I do. Lynn, do you have any questions about EHS, do you want to move on to the district-wide stuff?
We were.
I'm sorry.
We were. Uh, I'm, my brain was one step back and Walter was calling things, we're on district.
No, we're good. Um, so the top of this, this is, the district budget is where the increase in school committee.
Yes.
Comes from, okay. What's the like, with corresponding decrease right below that? It looks like it's almost.
Oh, there's no superintendent search.
Right.
Right, so that ten thousand dollar line item is. Yeah, she's sitting right over there.
Great.
So that's interesting, I didn't, I don't know if I really realized that when city council voted to increase stipends, that that would come from the district budget. That wouldn't, okay.
That's interesting to note. That was a note at the time, because that was why it was so perverse that we weren't even invited to participate in the conversation, because we oversee that funding.
Yeah.
Well. It all shook out the way it shook out, but, yeah.
This is the interesting thing, if we were having, if we were in a different position of having to talk about cutting something somewhere and that's something that increases, that'd be.
It does feel like you could make a really strong case that the school committee stipends should be coming out of city budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a strong case. Except that we have to report them on our end-of-year report, like there's a DESI function code for them, right? So it's, it's part of my expenditure and therefore it has to be part of my.
But isn't there a ton of stuff that the city is paying for in our case that are also DESI-coded?
So, yes, if they were in my budget, I would have codes, but since they're in their budget, they have codes. Like everything actually gets coded on both sides. Because everything.
That's what I mean.
Everything that's in my ledger is also in their ledger.
Too, you know what I mean?
I, I've never seen it in a city budget.
Really?
Yeah. Yep. And the four districts I've been in, it's always a line item in the school department budget.
We can't allow any more increases to those stipends.
Well, it just, it seems, not that it's going to be a huge difference, but it's something.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, it takes maybe a couple percentage points off.
Yep.
If you even like, you know, here's the actual increase past salaries, and then if you take out the, um, school committee raises that they got. Maybe goes from five point seven to five point six or something.
Because Megan, this isn't accounting for the next term, yeah? The big increase.
What? Well, it should be, how is it not?
That increase isn't supposed to happen until after we're out of office.
No, well, it comes next January.
No, hold on. She's right, wait, what happened?
We're out of office officially next January. With, there's.
December thirty-one. December thirty, December thirty-one.
So it's weird, okay.
It's part of this fiscal year and part of that fiscal year.
I see.
So the change, okay, so I guess what I should have said more precisely is the change you're seeing doesn't reflect the full increase.
It doesn't, because if you look at the money here.
You're right.
It doesn't add up. It should be, because it was the increase of two thousand, so it should be a twelve thousand dollar increase overall.
It's two thousand times six plus three thousand times, so it's half of the, yeah. And look for the formula.
But see, this is.
It's high enough that it makes me.
This is just the way, you just think we should.
Half of it. Even if we have to, if it's only like point one percent or point oh percent, like let's show that that adds to the budget. Someone else's choice that we had no control over.
And the next time city council's trying to get their same argument. Anyway, that's another topic.
Yeah, I just think I want to.
Well, yes.
So essentially, we had no control, the city council made a decision to spend some of our money without our input.
Yeah, we could legit get, get a hit for getting an increase when we had no control over getting that increase. Where they, on the other hand, vote for their own and they didn't vote for their own.
Well, for example, we just had an issue, you know, where we had to come up with roughly four thousand dollars and kind of a last-minute situation. It can matter, like.
So, just a, just a note for the future, about like that process should be managed.
Of a thousand percent on the.
Well, because it went from what, two hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Seems like.
Um.
Not a note.
The, the note in here says LI TICS. Um, I'm not sure what that is. Have to ask Nick. I'm not sure. I'm wondering. This is saying. Account number, business office.
LI TICS.
Other expenditure. Oh, I'm wondering if that's like an online platform that we use for, um, like athletic ticketing or whatever. Oh. Something like that. I'm guessing. Um, about five lines above that, there's one that has a hundred and twenty-two percent increase. Um, that's the ARX ED, that's our mandated trainings that everybody has to do.
Yeah, that's on, that's the, um, the program, it's electronic. And every, every teacher has to go on and go through all the policies and.
Bullying, sexual harassment, bloodborne pathogens.
They're excellent videos, they're really nice.
Yeah.
We upgraded to that system here and there.
Okay.
Not other lines that have big increases, but there are notes on. Um, there, do you see one that, there's like a new line item that didn't have an appropriation in twenty-five, has a new appropriation in twenty-six at eleven thousand dollars? That's the math curriculum line that's in Julianne's budget?
That's that illustre.
Yeah, and I am the consumables that are in color.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And then towards the bottom in the forty-one hundreds, those are all sort of maintenance lines. So those are some costs and for some materials having to do with maintenance equipment. And then the other big one, that seventy-eight percent jump, that's utilities. School nurses.
You get to the bottom, and here's the one about the homeless, remember, I remember Nancy talking about that.
Yeah, because they're in the same bargaining unit.
We give them a big raise.
Why is that, this might be what you just said, that the contract length changes is ninety-two percent down? Am I looking at that right?
Oh, because last year, we had a huge chunk of money set aside because the contracts weren't settled yet. Right, now that money is baked into the lines where the people are, because we know what they're going to be for next year.
Right, that two percent.
Right, so that line is very small, because that line now only includes, um, the few people who we think need some salary adjustments to make them more equitable to other people at central office staff. So those are only some small people that are going to get more than a two and a quarter.
Perfect, okay, okay.
And like, we have two people here in central office who are in individual contracts, but we generally give them the same increase, but it's in the clerical union, so like they're at four percent.
Yeah.
So that's a little bit above the two and a quarter. So it's a couple of those little adjustments that are in that line.
Uh huh, okay.
Good to know. Want to do any other?
Um, at the bottom?
Yep.
So, there's a two hundred and eighty, and I know this is.
You've looked at, has, especially, anything else on the district one?
Oh.
Pause one second, sorry.
Special head.
You are now. Yep.
And you're good, you're just, you're, you're going.
We're moving over there, Linda, in a few minutes. We're moving over there.
Any other thing I'm going to?
I always like to read ahead.
Yeah, good. Anything else with the district stuff? No questions, okay, very good. Okay, all right, let's do special ed.
Special ed, about.
Then there'll be your question.
Five lines down, it's not a big increase, but I just wanted to point it out. Um, because of the change in IEP, um, they've bought some more functionality within Power School, um, for the Power Schools to have special programs. So there's a thirteen percent increase, and I think like the fifth line down, um, in a other service, uh, other expenditures, but that's where the spend portions of Power School might have been.
Program you talked about at our last finance meeting, that new one that's going to replace Remind, that doesn't replace Power School.
No, 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 no. Just, it's separate, it's just parents' clear. But this program is, we were having, you know, you have to do the new IEP, there's a new IEP that started. And, um, we were having trouble transferring the information from old IEP into the new IEP. Something like the basic stuff, addresses, names. So we had to buy a different software, you know, in order to help with that.
Yep, and I think one of the other pieces is that if you're using the Power School special programs component, um, it includes like electronic signatures and some of those things, um, to make it easier to send forms back and forth between parents and families, evaluation requests, those sorts of things. So like a, like a DocuSign kind of platform.
Second to it.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing, I thought it was in the district, but where is the general population transportation?
It's in the district budget. Uh. Uh, the last four lines, contact services transportation, they start with an O four.
Oh, you know what, did I not? Are there two pages to the district budget?
There were. That's a problem.
Do we have one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, can't take this one.
I printed it, it's not.
Oh, I've got another one.
I was like looking at it, looking at it, looking at it, going, what? Thank you so much. There she is, okay.
Continue on, I'm just gonna look at this. Right, so there is an offset, um, using, uh, bus pass and those sorts of things in there and, um, and part of our chapter seventy-one revolving. But you will see that in that.
Oh, okay, so this, that's the three thirty-five?
Yep, is the offset.
How much of that is bus passes?
Can't be very much. It's like thirty thousand.
I think it's.
It's good of mine.
Yeah, it's not all three hundred, it's.
Mm-hmm.
On next, on next spreadsheet, there's like four, other funding sources, I consolidated them, otherwise this spreadsheet would be monstrous.
Yep.
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 Okay.
So that's, you know, tuition reimbursement, that's chapter seventy-one, that's, yeah, so that's a bunch of stuff sort of baked into there. You will see that there's a two hundred percent increase in the homeless transportation line.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was referring to.
That was where we went from one or two students to six.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Julia, the utility system, other expenditures.
Yep.
Is that?
It's electricity, electric, gas. Right, we don't, we don't get billed for water, which is nice.
Yes, really nice, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sydney. Is there any hint that those like delivery charges might come down, you know, for like public? Nothing?
No.
Yeah, I mean, A G is starting an investigation, but that'll take years.
Yeah, I mean, at least we're locked in with our rate, um, until twenty-seven for both gas and electric. I talked to Mike, uh, here in the procurement office. Um, because right now everybody's getting sort of spam calls, like your electricity rates are expiring, walk in with us. He's like, no, they're not, thanks. We're good, take it low, stop calling.
You haven't heard anything else about that solar array plan for the parking lot, technical was so hot on?
Oh, yeah. There's a, uh, energy.
Ask when I see her.
Mm-hmm. Is that part of the energy committee, the mayor's energy?
I don't know, I gotta type.
I know, I don't know.
She was, it was coming in hot when it was like all that stuff was going on.
And she was talking about the energy.
Well, I'm wondering if any of those things were sort of federally funded and made, maybe now the money's gone.
The last time we talked about it was after the election.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure.
Well, she said the construction, they expected to have that construction money.
Yep.
And now it's postponed for another full year, so they were counting on rents, rent money coming to them, or tax money it must be, for the buildings, and I can't do it now because they have to wait a year. The grant's been postponed.
Yeah, I know in my former district, we had put in an application, actually through the U S D A, don't act, ask me why U S D A was the grantor, but for a chiller replacement, and it took eighteen months from like the time we submitted the first paperwork until we got funding confirmation, so.
That timeline's not great if you're.
God, they're just disallowing poor people from taking their meals grab and go, they're really are.
I know.
They're fighting with the U S D A.
Yeah, let's check it about solar panels.
I'll call, I'll call next time.
Okay, cool.
Okay, special ed.
If you're letting it all down, can we call in the family to fix that rule though before the summer food program?
I would really love for them to.
Yeah. How they disallow people to take that food off site?
We would bother a hundred percent.
Like in my soul, it bothers me.
Yeah, um, I think I'm scheduling a meeting with Chris from Chart Wells and Ken next week, just to talk about the contract renewal and all those sorts of things and timeline and what we've got to do, but I'll talk to them about something.
Yeah, I think it would like, I said a hundred percent increase, I think it would like three hundred percent increase.
Yeah.
People who, if you like, pandemic levels, some people drove through and.
Yeah, right.
And you can grab, oh, your, you know, your girlfriend's going, oh, can you grab for us? It just makes so much sense.
Just makes everybody's life easier, anyway. All right. I hope you.
I'll call down the list.
There you go.
All right.
Okay, so back to special ed.
Let me go down to see if there are any specific notes in here about any particular items. Um, obviously the big change is out of district tuition.
Hmm.
Right, third from the bottom line, so we have made some adjustments based on, um, the current kids, what we have in the pipeline, kids that are in, um, temporary placements, people, uh, that we think reviews will be coming up for. Um, so in that other funding column, you see that there's one point two million. Um, four hundred thousand of that is from the sped special education two forty grant, um, part by I D E A. And the other eight hundred thousand is an estimate of what we have from circuit breaker.
Okay.
And, and that's going to be based on prior year claiming, but obviously, and the only good side is when your expenses go up, your claims go up. But because of the delay and how it happens. And then, um, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar offset that's also circuit breaker that we use for transportation. Just the bottom line. Right, and so that's why it, it looks like transportation costs have gone down, but it's because we're anticipating, um, more of the offset.
Um, so it looks like HEC is separated, add as a separate line item, is Mount Tom Academy included in that or is Mount Tom Academy too lined up?
Uh, I do not believe Mount Tom Academy is considered a mass school. So the spent tuition, that would be like if we were sending one of our kids to a program at another mass public school. Right, like if we were sending.
That line would be, I see, I see.
Like if they had a teacher with a deaf in South Hadley and we were going to sit.
Right, okay.
Or if, you know, if like the next town over had, um, like a links program and we were going to send a kid, or a language-based program.
So I wonder where Mount Tom is.
That's a good ques, I can ask Julianne, um, if we have students there and if so, uh, where that comes from.
Yeah. I mean, that collaborative's line.
I think it might be in the collaborative, because it is a collaborative.
I mean, look at that.
It's a big. And that seems like a lot for just HEC.
Yeah.
I don't know, I was just curious.
I was honestly kind of curious, like I wondered if the tuition differed dramatically between HEC and Mount Tom, but Antigone, no.
Yeah, let's see if we can get some more information, just so we can understand like what.
Curious, yeah.
I mean, obviously we'll spend more, gonna spend on.
And also just if the collaborative becomes less fungible, let's say.
Well, that's part of the.
I wonder what we're paying for those services now and like how you could replicate that and what that would cost.
Can you pick anything because of where's the?
I'd, I mean, I don't know if she deals in billing that much, but.
But she knows, well, you can check.
Yeah. I'd start there. Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions on the special ed.
What about the one that you wanted to ask about? Any other change or?
Hmm, and we no longer, like, do we have specialty services, our psychology services, are we contracting any of that out anymore? We use the contractor. Wanted that out, have we pretty much gotten to like?
Most of it is in-house. I know occasionally when we need, uh, like a special education assessment in another language.
Hmm.
Right, um, like right now I was helping, uh, recently helping to, um, Antigone find a resource to do in a Chinese.
Yep.
Right, um, so some of those things, we have to, if, um, parents ask for an independent eval, right, we still contract out for those.
But we're trying to not have those.
Yep.
Those aren't automatically granted, those requests, right?
It happens.
Right, I know, but like by law, they're not.
Not anymore.
Wait, can you tell me more about, I don't know if I know, uh, what you're talking about.
Uh, in a team eval, parents have been asking for independent evals.
What does it mean, like someone who's not, doesn't work for the district?
Right, and those costs are three thousand dollars in a eval.
Yep.
And that's just not common districts to have, to have that be, uh, what's expected every single time to have a meeting. It's, it's really.
Every meeting?
They've been requesting it and they have been allowing a lot of them to go through. And I think it's just, you know, the team chair, trying, you know, letting parents feel like they could get what, what they requesting, but it's not necessary. We, we can do our own evals and then it, and then if it doesn't show, you know, something extreme like that, then we could go to the extended, but it should not be a common practice.
Shouldn't be step one.
It's not step one.
So are we already in the midst of like making that change?
Yeah, we started making that change about three weeks ago.
Okay, great.
Talking to the chief of people and saying, no, no more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will there be folks who are unhappy about that?
Yeah, could be, but the point is it's not, it can't be an expectation, it's not an expectation of an initial eval.
So maybe.
As a parent of somebody, I had a kid in an I E P, we would have these meetings, these meetings are very emotional. They're very dr, there was not a single I E P meeting where I didn't cry, even if there was good news, it's highly emotionally charged. Or very, you view it kind of by default as you on this side, them on the other side. So will there be friction? Undoubtedly, but this is a justifiable, defensible place.
Is there any use in like coordinating with, um, can do just to like help educate what's?
That's a good idea.
You know what I mean, just to ease the transition?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's.
Restand it and then.
It is a mostly new eval, so people are not used to.
Yeah.
Having the process, it was just provided for people without them really asking for it, so.
Which is a lovely thing to do, but not if it's, not if you're bleeding money, right?
Right. At three thousand dollars pop, a lot of times that independent eval doesn't give you any, any different clinical information in terms of services that child needs.
I was gonna say, it sort of implies that there's something about the in-house one that.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we'll only use that second opinion if we need it for some reason.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's a second opinion.
Yeah, second, yeah, I got that.
Not for us.
Right, okay.
So by default, this shouldn't be happening that way.
Let's loop in.
Yeah.
Can do.
Good.
Okay, that's not it. Okay. Don't have any other things on the, I don't either line item. I also don't know enough about.
Don't have a lot of.
Right here, here.
I mean, there's not a lot of changes.
We have no, we have no waste here, it's just the basic of what we're providing and doing a great job with what we have.
Yeah.
And we, we're not asking to be outrageous, few things we did ask for that need to happen. But we, we are really keeping everything really down because we understand the financial impact, but a five point two five increase, that, that's very reasonable.
And that's five point two five when you consider we're operating under budget right now because we're at a deficit, so when you factor that in, it drops even lower.
Maybe it's five point one.
It's three point, it's three and a quarter when you factor in like the million dollar deficit we're operating on right now.
And what about the state funds?
Well, that's already taking those out of. I want to say too, for the public, like when I was first on here in my first tenure, this was, um, it was a very tight budget back then too, but it was a shell game, right? You would identify, let's say it's grades three through five and it's reading, that's the problem, so that little pot of money would get moved there at the expense of all of these other, and you were just constantly moving this thing around year to year to year. That's what we're trying to get out of, because we're not blowing up this district, we're just trying not to rob Peter to pay Paul.
That's right.
Like both the state and Paul deserve an equitable education.
That's a great point.
Yeah, and sustainable, then we can keep it.
Exactly.
Then start thinking about growth.
That's right.
Yeah.
And when we see whatever the world looks like in the next couple of years.
Right. Or, all right.
So I, I guess I want to know, like, how comfortable do we feel with the budget as it stands now? Um, because I need to start building the budget book and all the charts and the graphs and all of those things, and I, I guess I need to know, um, when, well, like, will it be at the meeting on the fourth or the eleventh? Will we feel like we're confident in those numbers? To start putting those things together?
I say go for the fourth.
Yeah.
I have more, I have a more press, I think the budget all looks great.
Yeah.
I'm, I want to shift our focus to the appropriation to fill the gap for this fiscal year.
I did just send Nick an email today and just sort of ask him timing wise, like when have you done that in the past?
We haven't. Done one.
A big appropriation like this?
No. We haven't. Yeah, most he's ever liked me, because he can see that he's on video, by the way, just.
Is that, I don't know whether it makes more sense to wait until later in the spring when we are more confident in the definite number? Or if it makes more sense to do it earlier?
Why don't I talk to the finance chair?
Side.
And get a read from the city council side of how they feel, I mean, clearly the mayor will have to be looked into, but just given what they're dealing with, what? No sense swimming upstream.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know whether it makes more sense to have our budget settled and then ask for that or ask for that and have that, the fact that we're underfunded this year is part of the conversation.
Right.
Is there a drop dead date where we really, when do we need that cash in hand?
Uh.
I do think they're still certifying the free cash, yeah, I think it's available yet.
Right, I would, we would need it in hand in time to then process any journal entries or things that we need to do and to do the accounting piece of it. I mean, at least it's just adding more to the general fund, so I'm not moving things off of grant, moving things around. Um. Yeah, I would think, I, I don't know how often the city council meets, so I don't know.
Everyone.
Okay, so at this point, we're talking about whether we were putting it on an, an April, May, or June agenda, so.
Okay, I will talk to him and I'll email you. And maybe see what the mayor is thinking in terms of, do we need to have that underway for it to be part of the explanation or?
Well, I first want to go to finance because they just got a new councillor also, and so they did some shifting. So Peg Coniff has now rejoined the council, she has a very strong finance background, she was a finance chair. So they took J T off of finance and put Peg on finance, so it's Tom, Connie, and Peg. So I just want to get a set, like however they're working, like, when's a good time for us to come to you with this, how much time do you need for this, and then I can loop a colon, who again, just wants things to move this way.
Yeah.
So like, doesn't.
Address that here.
Right, does that work for her and say?
And I can double check the math, look, dig into that, because like I have the sheet that Nick shared with you. I haven't yet been able to find his backup documents for how he came up with those numbers, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I want to be able to verify that.
Very short question.
I want to know that the numbers are right before we.
That's a good idea. And so essentially what I've been communicating to them is that, how, how do we want, do they have a preference on the timing, given that we really kind of want to be in receipt of these funds in June?
Yep.
Early June.
Yeah.
To receive funds in early June. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because otherwise they'll have to hold off on closing the books as Hattell and I do some like magic, because at the end of the, like, we want to close it out to zeros, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Alrighty.
So now, what about, what, what do you want us to have prepared for Tuesday's meeting?
A dollar amount. They, they're curious about like, how much do we need?
For the school committee meeting or for the finance subcommittee?
Like, for the budget or the F I twenty-six budget or the appropriation?
I would like the school committee to appropriate an amount for the.
I know what you mean, approve.
Approve an amount for the appropriation on Tuesday's meeting.
On the eleventh.
Okay.
On the four.
Oh, you want the school committee?
The full.
We have to vote on it?
No, okay, great, so we don't need to add it to our agenda.
So unless. We absolutely need that additional time, I want to get it to the school committee as soon as possible, but if Julie is telling me I need a mi, I need two weeks, I'm onboarding all this stuff, I can't like.
Yeah, I'm just having not put together the budget book previously.
Do you want to, do you want to do it, have that vote at the beginning of the meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, we meet again in March.
Well, it's the budget hearing, so I just was.
She probably needs the budget book together for us, right? Yeah, I mean, because I need to send out the advertisement, because the public hearing advertisement has to go out the week of the tenth. And then I need to make sure that that book is together by the end of that.
So the twenty-fifth will definitely be the public hearing for that day.
Yep.
Is it, does it make sense to also double up and get the appropriation vote in that meeting?
That's, that's.
The other thing we can do.
Depends on the story you want to tell.
Well, we can, exactly right.
Or if you want to actually hold off on that until April. Right, so do you want to fight the next year's budget and then the current year deficit, or do you like? And that, that might be a conversation, Nicole. Right?
Yeah.
About how, what kind of message do we want to say? Like our budget, like is the message, our budget increase is only five and a half percent if you don't count C B As and we did great? Or is it, we're underfunded this year and we need another million dollars and because of that it looks like our budget, right?
It's not that, yeah.
Exactly.
It's not that.
So.
Maybe we tell people that, but get a feel for what you.
I don't want to need it by, and then we could.
I just also think sometimes things can happen and people can change direction. Yeah.
Let's talk early in the week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're not going to be ready for Tuesday.
Okay.
Which is fine, so what we're between now is maybe we schedule another quick meeting for this, you know, that's, I don't like the idea of doing it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we could do it right around before or after, even if it's scheduling another brief little meeting just to get that voted on, but let me chew on that.
You're saying another brief meeting for the full committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a quorum to approve an appropriation amount.
Okay, so first, the finance subcommittee, we have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the fourth. And on that agenda is just like a review and final questions about this and then potentially vote. And I think your question was, do we feel like we can vote on the fourth, or do we need to take that fourth meeting, I shouldn't say it that way, that additional meeting, I'm feeling comfortable.
Agreed. I, I think we're good unless another shoe drops.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think we got to, you know, we'll, we'll.
And we're not going to cancel the fourth meeting until we have the third meeting, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Among the people in this room, we're assuming we won't need it, but if a shoe drops by the time we meet next.
Yeah, just to give an idea of what, I, I would suspect that we'll probably vote it out then.
Okay.
It gives us a chance to like look again and see if there's any, you know, questions that come up. I did have one question that came up between this week and last week. When I was looking at this, um, the overview, we have, I think this was Laura's point of like in the additions that we put in here.
Yep.
That came from the department. My original question was, are the departments happy? Whatever that means, right? But like, what are the things that they asked for that we weren't able to do?
That is something I'd like to have a list of, all the stuff they requested that we can't grant.
We have to be careful how we communicate that, cause I don't want parents to think, oh, look at that, but. This part here.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Give me a minute to dig in here.
I was just curious, so we can.
They were very good at their request. They did, they, they did not ask for anything they really didn't think needed.
There's a high level of diverse needs right now, though. You just can't get away from that.
I'll be curious, I don't know if this is.
Yeah.
I'll know what. I'm curious to hear your thoughts on if this is something we wanna, even. I'm, I'm curious what they would have put on their list, just under what they actually asked for. Was there a full wish list? I don't know, that's helpful to a story, or, you know.
Could have the EHS expert teacher.
They're not getting everything they want, they're, they're already, yeah, they sell, then they cut again, yeah.
And I just think it's helpful for the finance committee on the city council side to understand that by the time this gets to them, this has been edited by four different sets of leadership, like it's been cut down and cut down and cut down and cut down before they ever even get a whiff of it.
Yeah, and I think it also is like a list of things that, like up here is where we're headed for growth, that, you know, this is what future years, you could see this.
Okay, so things that were brought to the leadership team from the schools that were on an initial group of requests that they evaluated that did not make it into this, um.
Can I scan or photograph that or something?
Okay. Um, there, initially they had said they needed four additional paras for that life skills program. And we realized that we could reallocate from Mountain View, so that didn't get through. Um, the middle school had asked for a reading intervention teacher. Um, and they had instead decided that they wanted to prioritize some other things. Um, there was some talk about bringing in an outside organization to do some strategic planning work, right? That would have been eight thousand dollars, they decided that that wasn't a priority.
Definitely, it's time to do another strategic plan.
It's time, yeah.
But there is some funding I think Michelle had worked on or working on for the foundation, which is a really good organization. Got us a lot of support.
Okay, maybe we can think about like planning now for two years out, contracting for a strategic plan or something.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good one to have on, to make sure people are aware of that, and we're due for it again.
Um, initially they had requested thirty-one thousand dollars for that math curriculum update, but they identified fourteen thousand dollars in this current year funding, which is why that request is only, right? So again, the, the list of, there were really only a few things that they pulled out.
They're very well trained in how to do this.
Right, based on prioritizing, yeah.
And though, I think the big one that they really want and still want, but is the EHS student support position.
Let me say what the elephant in the room to, EHS is a fantastic school with incredible programming. The science department is not competitive. It's just too small, like they don't have enough staff to offer a variety of classes, right, you know, um. But that's a big investment, that's a several hundred thousand dollar a year investment.
Yeah, plus, what, because the um, Mountain View Elementary and Middle have that program for kids that just can't sit all day in a regular class. When they get to the high school, it's very difficult for those kids, cause there's not a program there, they're not used, it's not, they do the best they can. But what they were asking for is a program like they have in the middle school where they will go to their classes. If they get too worked up, they report to this room, and, and this person in there that's gonna work with them and then get them set to go back, so they're not hall rollers, because what they tend to do that is they go into the regular class and then leave and try, or not go into the regular class, and it just becomes a job for somebody to always shred up now.
Mm-hmm.
But that, we, I think that was coming in, it's around seventy-two thousand dollars, we just don't have that.
That was gonna be like a couple of positions?
There was gonna be one teacher, and that was the fourth para, so three, three for the life skills and the fourth was for that position.
Got it.
But we just don't have it. And, and for the, um, elementary school, what they did to keep theirs is they kind of they, they cut a fourth grade slot, moved the fourth grade teacher, but then they had that other teacher to put in, so they have in one less academic teacher, cause they moved it into the program.
Yeah.
But there just wasn't a teacher that the high school could cut and move into that spot.
Right.
So we had to cut it completely. They, they are still upset about it, every time they see me, they ask me about it, but we just, we just don't have that. So maybe they need, maybe they need to look at maybe somebody else, if they, a carbon specialist teaching that they could be purpose or.
Is there any creative way to handle this, like?
That's, that's what she's saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but like even just for next year, like.
Yeah, like repurposing one of your existing specializations, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Could we wrap them into a bright? Like if we add a pair of bright?
They're still paying half that salary, we gotta mind our Ps and Qs.
The bright, bright's great, but the issue with it is, it's a specific program. And you have to use it according to the guidelines of that program.
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, we have that.
We might have more, we might have more flexibility in year three, because year three, we're paying the full.
Everything.
Right, but year two, they're still paying half, so.
Yeah.
Um, any news about trying to kind of increase that rigor at the middle school, like what the timeline might be? Like we talked about how earth science, we're administering a lot of these classes for the vast majority, if not all, students in ninth grade, many neighboring districts do in eighth grade. Any, like, how does that work hand in hand with this budgeting stuff and the fact that people?
That would be true, I'm definitely interested, so, um, they would end up with two thousand of the classes. Not this year, but next year, so the math is, is stepped up. So there'll be two full classes of kids going over. Uh, Bill has a subcommittee looking at.
Better science piece?
Yeah, looking at curriculum.
Mm-hmm, good.
And what, what should we do on that? And, uh, there's another interesting committee that we started because, uh, there are, you know, teachers that teach honors, and we have classes that feel that there are kids that get in that, and then that maybe can't perform. So it's saving the other classes, in some cases, just with special ed kids in it, you can't do that. You have to, you know, your classes should.
Are you talking about at the high school?
High school, yeah. So they're working on, you know, what, what? How, how do you look at your classes? Because as a teacher, what our goal is, that everybody can attend, you know, hope to get or achieve to be in those high classes, so you don't wanna make that an unreachable goal.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, and then there are some kids that don't even try, which you would want them to do. So then how do you also make the class, kids that don't get into those honors classes, cause they don't wanna be in them? How do you give them the rigor that they need, right? So it, it shouldn't just be that you have rigor in your advanced honors classes, you should have that also.
That's what I'm saying, like, we, like, across the board, these eighth graders should be exposed to earth science. Like this, we just need to like, knock this.
In most places, BioOne starts in grade nine. Right?
Yeah.
And they take the test in grade nine, so then tenth.
So we're like a year behind, because our kids aren't getting earth science.
Are we, are we a year behind in math too? I mean, every school I went.
Population, yeah, because we have not every.
Usually algebra ones in eighth grade, isn't it?
That's what she's saying, so it's been a smaller and smaller group that's been qualifying, so what they're trying to do is like they've they had an active intervention, that they're like putting all of this attention on to try to in, to get these kids better. A lot of it was COVID too, cause she was getting a big fat group to push up, and then COVID hit. And like, like my first kid qualified, my second kid did not. They're both smart kids, like it's just big, he just couldn't find an ass with both hands after COVID.
And I think the other thing that we'll have to think about with science is that a lot of the switches that a lot of districts did in terms of rearranging their science curriculum and the order of classes had to do with MCAS. And now, I mean, the elephant in the room is that, that in some ways doesn't matter anymore, although we do still wanna keep an eye on it.
I agree. I look at the high school science curriculum, and I hear this from a lot of parents. Now, my kids were not super, my younger one is a sciency kid, but I'm realizing, oh, maybe we have, for the sake of argument, ten offerings where typically it's eighteen or twenty at a school a little bit larger than us in the sciences. And then those aren't exact numbers, but I'm saying like, we, it's just this very small, it, it's just not a head. Whereas you look at some of our other departments in the high school and they're extremely robust, the science one is the one that's kind of.
I mean, in terms of electives and things?
Yeah, and the variety of courses and.
I mean, I guess it's been a long time since I've looked at the, the standards in Common Core and what we have to offer. I think in a lot of districts, right, they only required three years of social studies, which automatically gave you rooms, right, for at least two electives, right, depending on whether you have long blocks or block scheduling or A D B, whatever. Um, but a lot of districts required four years of science, so there wasn't, especially if you had a kid that struggled with science and had to, you know, basically retake an MCAS prep.
Yep.
It took away the opportunity to take a science.
And this is a working class community that almost lost accreditation before we built that new school. Like this is all coming from a place that makes a lot of sense, but like, are we happy staying here? Do we wanna live on this, or should we?
Yep.
This strikes me as something.
The expectations in this town in terms of, I mean, I went save so dramatically increased the last five years, you're getting it. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, COVID, COVID throws it all off the timeline.
They, the, the population, with school age children.
Yeah.
Our school manager has dramatically, they, they are expecting a much more rigorous.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
In the last five years.
Yes, yes, I would agree with that.
This strikes me as something that, your ideas about like, working with other schools nearby. There's like a specialty class that strikes me as something.
Or HCC, or UMass, or like fine, zero hour, or offering some AP classes.
Um, I said, yeah, I was like, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
When I was in high school, they offered, I guess they had, they had zero hour and nine hour, right? That there were kids that wanted to take advanced level courses but didn't have room in their schedules. So they came in early and they took a class right before school started, so I think they had like AP Spanish. Cause there were like eight kids who really wanted to do that and the teacher agreed to come in. I think we paid the teacher one seventh of their salary, or whatever it was, to pay to teach that class. And the class started at, you know, seven oh five or whatever it was.
That's interesting.
It gave me a little thrill up my arm.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
There's so many dual enrollment classes, online courses, there's, there's a lot of, of ability and capacity to bring in different.
We're gonna need to, we don't have that much ex, we have a little extra space at the high school, but not an abundance, like.
Yep, I know at West Springfield, they had, they had one kid who was really interested in taking AP Calculus BC.
Jesus Christ.
Right, and so they, they found an, an online application where he could take that course online and still prepare for the exam. Cause I mean, the other problem is honestly, they didn't have a staff member who could teach it.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense for every school to have, run a class of one.
Yep.
This is great.
But that's why early college is, yeah, absolutely. After that, early college with the college level credits, it's unbelievable. That's what we do now.
Is that all of that aside? It is like, oh, this is what it's like, like, it's, cause it's so different.
Did you touch on that, the early college?
He did, and his first, first half, it was a social class, yes, and the first half he was like, up this noise, like it was just a, I hate, by the end he was like, oh. Yep, oh, I get, this is, this is just a different approach, this is a different way to look, like, oh, okay.
Yeah, um, I, I haven't heard in a bit, um, a former colleague of mine now works for the Mass STEM Council. Um, and he works with a lot of funding that's coming out of the E O E office, right? Not coming out of the education office, and said that there's a lot of stuff in the work specifically in Western Mass around sort of STEM and connections, so.
Can we get some like middle school curriculum on robotics and like hands-on learning and the? I mean, I did it in like nineteen ninety-two in Ware, for Christ sakes, like there's gotta be a way we could figure out how, and I know the teachers talk about wanting to do it, the parents talk about wanting to see it, like.
Yeah.
Okay.
So many great directions to grow.
So we'll, we'll work on getting some of those connections up.
And it has been some conversation about the, the, uh, kids taking the biology in grade nine.
Mm-hmm.
And then they take the math and English in grade ten and take it all three, right? And they have, and also don't forget that they're on blocks.
Mm-hmm, sophomore year is very hard at EHS.
So, right, so that whole thing about
Yep.
when should you really take it? Uh, it's, it's still gonna be your accountability. Yep, so your accountability by the state is what your score is gonna be on, on that test, at least for this year and next year unless something changes. So kids still have to do well, they still have to have, have the background in order to do it.
Yeah, we might need to phase the earth science thing, like we might need to do it like we do algebra for two or three years, like hand-selected, the top stu-, you know, to kind of get that, and then like.
Yep.
Yeah, pilot and then implement.
And see how the scores are.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think statewide, last time I looked at the numbers, like something like seventy-eight percent of kids that pass the science MCAS pass the biology.
Oh, yeah, because physics.
Well, cause physics is basically math.
True.
Right?
Yeah.
Except, except the number means you AP Calculus five kid, wherever you are, God bless you, probably building rockets or something. Yeah, I mean, the difference is that in physics, the answer matters, like the answer means something as opposed to just solving its four. I think it's four, that now means that, you know, the ship's gonna slow down or it's.
I've never heard it described that way, and that is a brilliant way in this.
Maybe if you had taught me physics, I would.
Seriously. I just suddenly started liking physics more.
You're right, it's the hardest part of me in my video games, where you have to like build the puzzles and think in three dimensions. I mean, it's, it's, right, it's applied algebra.
Yeah.
Good call.
Listen to her, she's an accounting nerd, she's, except you're not, because you taught social studies. So you give me this conflict in my soul, Julia, that I need to get right with.
I think it's not a conflict, I think it's love, I think it's.
Well, I did, I thought my people couldn't also be.
Brilliant mathematicians.
I thought there were two kinds of nerds.